Good evening. It is six thirty. We are going to go ahead and get started. The City of Castle Hill City Council will convene into a regular meeting on March tenth, two thousand and twenty, at six thirty P. M. in the council chambers located at two zero nine Lemonwood Drive, Castle Hills, Texas. We're going to call the Castle Hills Regular City Council Meeting to Order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We're going to start with the invocation. Mr. Isra, did you have anybody in mind? Okay. Okay, we will forego the invocation tonight and pres- By all means.
Thank you. My name's Denise Haley. I live at two two zero Lundley Lane, and I am a member and elder at Covenant Presbyterian Church right around the corner. Dear God, we're just grateful, grateful for this day that you made. Grateful to be here tonight, to learn, to serve, to do our best as citizens and as leaders. Please help us all to act with wisdom and to show kindness and to listen to one another and seek to do what's best. In your name we pray. Amen. You want me to do the pledge too?
If you're up for it, you can lead us in the pledge.
If there's nobody else to do it, I'll do it. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Okay, we're going to proceed with the promotional ceremony and swearing in of David Kane as captain of the City of Castle Hills Fire Department. Chief?
Well, good evening and thank you, residents, mayor, council, and city staff. And thank you for your time this evening in allowing me to promote Lieutenant David Kane to the rank of captain of sea shift. Lieutenant Kane will have nine years with the department coming this May. He currently holds certifications as fire officer one, advanced firefighter, fire inspector, and as well as his instructor. Lieutenant Kane has served as lieutenant for sea shift and as the acting captain of sea shift. He has done well in filling those duties, and I'm sure he will continue to be an asset to the department and the city. I would like for all of you to join me in presentation of his badge in the swearing in as the captain of sea shift. So, David? Raise your hand. I, David Kane, do hereby declare-
I, David Kane, do hereby declare-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
That I will support the Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the state of Texas-
The Constitution of the state of Texas-
My fellow firefighters I serve with-
My fellow firefighters I serve with-
And as an officer of the Castle Hills Fire Department-
And as an officer of the Castle Hills Fire Department-
My fundamental duty is to serve the people-
My fundamental duty is to serve the people-
To safeguard and preserve life, health, and property-
To safeguard life, health, and property-
Against fire and other perils-
Against fire and other perils-
I recognize the badge of my office-
I recognize the badge of my office-
As a symbol of the fire department-
As a symbol of the fire department-
I make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
I make these promises so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Congratulations.
Okay, we will now proceed on citizen comments. Just a reminder, this is for non-agenda items because we have quite a few people signed up, non-agenda items. The first one is Mr. John Connell. Okay, so. Next, Ms. Patsy Martin.
Hi, I'm Patsy Martin. I live at two twenty-three Glen Tower. I'm going to be president of the garden club next year, and so Mayor Trevino asked if the garden club might consider a new project for next year. And it is a yard of the month project, which our garden club was just thrilled to do. And as a gift to our garden club, a personal gift from our mayor, he funded two signs for us so that we could have a yard of the month in the North Cone and also in the South Cone. So I want to let you all be the first ones to see our sign and to thank Mayor Trevino publicly for having given us these beautiful signs. And then I want to ask each resident to sharpen up their green thumbs that are very, very clean these days and get gardening because we're going to start May through December noticing the garden that is the most beautiful in Castle Hills each month. So this is our sign. We thank you, Mayor Trevino. And I hope each of you would like to have this in your yard.
You can take my name off when it comes to the citizens to be heard part because that was, I was part of that. So you can go to the Castle Hills Facebook page and find out how to submit your yard. We're working on all the details of all that. Meanwhile, you can get started with sharpening your thumbs. Thank you, Jerry. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take note of the, I'm glad we're bringing this back. For about twenty-five years ago, this used to be given out in the city. The sign was in front of yards, and it sort of just vanished. And I'm glad to see the garden club renewing this again because it, I wonder what had happened to it in the first place.
I had asked Ms. Martin about it, and she said, "It's a great idea. Let's start it up." And I said, "Well, whatever I can do to help." So I bought the signs. Next, we have Richard O'Peala. Okay, it says- I tried to revise the system for you, Brother Dooling. I'm sorry. We'll tweak it again. Mr. Knippa, is that the same case? Okay, Mr. Baker? Sean Timlin? Same? Is there anybody that wants to speak on citizens to be heard? How about we do that? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Sarah Teal, and I'm not a resident, but I'm a pseudo-resident since I've been here for a decade managing Castle Hills Marketplace right at West Avenue Northwest Military. And I'm here to say farewell because the property just sold. And the people will be managing the property themselves, but, and I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional, but the city has been amazing to work with. And these gentlemen, this gentleman over here have just made such a difference in how I've watched for ten years the city and worked with everybody, and the ladies at the front have been fantastic. I build and manage in many of the cities here in San Antonio, and I cannot tell you guys what a little gem you have here. It's fantastic. I hope to find other projects to steward through their redevelopment. And I'm looking at a couple of things. Have helped a couple of doctors in the area bring them into their own ownership. But I just wanted, this is really just a thank you because this is a great little city. And it's, I shouldn't say little. This is a great city, and it's amazing to watch all the changes. And it's not the dollars that make the difference. It's not the new roadways or trees that are planted. It's the people that are behind, it's the people behind the sign, not the sign, that make Castle Hills what it is. And again, I want to thank, please, James and Louis and Ryan, the amazing guys to work with. They've helped us tremendously make Castle Hills Market a beautiful new birth of an old, an old bird who was looking tired. They really helped us steer us through in getting that back on the fast track and looking as pretty as it does. So I want to thank everybody again and tell you, I'm not gone. I'm just, I'm just on the sidelines for a minute. I'll be back. Thank you.
Dr. Flynn?
Mike Flynn, one eleven Emerson Lane. As many people in this chamber are aware, the citizens of Castle Hills, or six citizens of Castle Hills filed a petition to have Councilwoman Winger removed from office for reasons of incompetence and official misconduct. We presented evidence to, of her incompetence and official misconduct in August to a Bear County judge who granted our petition, allowing us to move forward. After five months of following the legal process and after we had a trial scheduled, the Bear County District Attorney suddenly decided to dismiss our petition. During the judicial hearing that followed, Ms. Winger's attorney tried to diminish our petition by stating it was brought by only six citizens. What he failed to state is that we received financial and more support from other concerned citizens, and to those citizens, I would like to offer my thanks. Ms. Winger and her attorney stated our reason for bringing the petition was simply political in nature. Speaking only for myself, that accusation is ludicrous on its face. There is no way I would expend the time and effort or incur the expense of a lawsuit simply because my preferred candidate did not win an election. In fact, I started pursuing this action in two thousand and eighteen, shortly after Ms. Winger was re-elected when I learned of her desire to replace our city council, our city manager. In addition to Ms. Winger's attempts to remove the city manager, other justification for her removal includes her efforts to suppress our constitutional right to free speech and freedom of assembly and her fundamental disregard or willful ignorance of state and city ordinances. I went on record by addressing city council on several occasions to voice my concerns over her actions. Ms. Winger was apparently unmoved by my arguments. To be clear, just because the DA declined to prosecute our petition does not mean that Ms. Winger did not do the things we listed in our petition. As such, Ms. Winger was not removed, but she certainly was not exonerated. She simply got by based on a technicality. Because the law allowing for removal of an elected official is poorly worded, the providing judge accepted the DA's motion. However, I believe he did so reluctantly. He dismissed the petition without prejudice and stated it was appealable. He also did not assign damages to either party. Since the goal of our petition was to legally remove Ms. Winger from her position, we decided not to appeal because it would not be completed before the next election. That could have ended the matter. However, in keeping with her character, Ms. Winger and Ms. Gonzalez have decided to sue those citizens that signed the petition for as much as six hundred thousand dollars in damages. The hearing on the lawsuit is on March seventeenth at the Bear County Courthouse, with proceedings starting at eight thirty A. M. We invite all concerned citizens to join us to show their support for a better future for Castle Hills. I find it ironic that Ms. Winger and Ms. Gonzalez are pursuing damages for themselves but refuse to compensate the city for the damages they brought by suing the city. I have a few more paragraphs if I could continue.
All right, Dr. Flynn. We have to keep on going.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no other citizens signed up to be heard. We will proceed to the consent agenda. The consent agendas are self-explanatory by the city council or have been previously discussed and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests. The consent agenda is for consideration by the city council only and not subject to public discussion.
So move. Second.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you so much. I'd like to point out this is a momentous occasion since we're completely caught up in our minutes. This time last year, we were probably fourteen or fifteen sessions, like, meetings behind. Let's see. New business discussion and possible action on the property assessed clean energy program. From ACOG, Mr. Rappley.
Yes, Mayor. Mr. John Clamp from ACOG presented this item last month, provided information on this program, and if the city was interested in participating. It was not put on the agenda for action. If council decides to take action, then, as I've outlined in the AGCOM, which we're on the previous agenda as well, there's a four-step process to enact the program, which Mr. Clamp will return and start that process if council desires to move forward with this program. But it's simply because council couldn't take action last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Council, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we proceed forward with the steps as outlined in our agenda item and adopt this program.
Thank you, Mr. May.
I'll second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Mr. Gregory?
What are we going to be voting on specifically?
Mr. Rappley, would you care to answer that?
Yes, Mayor. Again, to move this forward, to start the process to accept, or the City of Castle Hills to accept and be a part of the PACE program. Again, in the AgendaCom, as I mentioned, there's a four-step process. And again, Mr. Clamp would return to initiate that four-step process at the April meeting if council wanted to move forward. I simply put it on there because I know Councilman May made a motion to take action, which wasn't available last month.
So a yes vote would mean we're accepting this proposal? And we're then starting process to-
Well, the councilman, the next step would be for Councilman Clamp to return. There's a public hearing as a result of this, and then you adopt a resolution. So that is the process. I'm just moving this forward to allow that process essentially to start next council meeting.
So the only action would be that we would be scheduling a public hearing as a result of a positive vote. Is that correct?
Yes, and then there would be a resolution attached to that agenda item in order to move forward and accept the program as Castle Hills.
Okay, I'll make a motion to go ahead and do that.
We have a motion on the table right now. We're in discussion.
Hi, Paula.
Ms. Winger?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think as, as Mr. Clamp explained last time, there's no cost at all to the city from this program. It just allows property owners to get-
Ms. Winger, can you use your microphone?
Sorry?
Can you use your microphone?
I am using my microphone. So, so it's not really any risk to the city. It's just an advantage to the property owners.
That's correct. Any further discussion?
Mayor, just to clarify, it looks like it's a two-step process that there's a, to adopt a resolution of an intent to have a public hearing date and time. Then the next step would be to adopt the resolution to establish the program itself.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. No further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Proceed on to item number two, public hearing on a replat application of John Connell's for a replat establishing private lots. The proposed replat will create two lots from a tract of land, which is point three four seven acres, located in the West Oaks of Castle Hills, Unit Two, Planned Unit Development, formerly being all of Lot forty-three, Block ten, County Block five seventy-seven eight A, zero five seven seven A, West Oaks of Castle Hill subdivision, Planned Unit Development, recorded in volume nine five nine five, page forty-nine of the deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas. Said tract being divided into two residential lots, Lot forty-four, Block ten, point one seven five acres, and forty-five, Block ten, point one seven two acres. County Block five seven seven eight B, West Oaks of Castle Hill subdivision, Planned Unit Development.
Mr. Mayor, is there any more information than this one page that has been put in our, this is all our-
Mr. Gregory, this is, Mr. Gregory, this is a public hearing, and this is only for item number two. If you look to item number three, you have the background information for item number two.
Got you.
Good evening. I'm John Connell. I wanted to thank you for your time and be available to answer any questions about the replat. Simply wanted to take the one lot and replat it back to the two original lots that it once was before.
Thank you, sir. We're going to open the public hearing. We're going to hear from the audience, and we imagine we'll bring you back up at some point here shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you. It is six fifty-one. We're going to open the public hearing. In the interest of time, if you're wanting to speak, you're welcome to come up. I think I have Ms. Laverne Jaffet.
Yes. My name's Laverne Jaffet. I live at twelve Shady Cove in the West Oaks subdivision that we're speaking of right now. I would just like, I'm real glad that Mr. Connell is going to redo our lots. I would just like for our record to show that we are a PUD. We do have our own little codes for our subdivision. We have a homeowners association. And even though we are naturally part of our Castle Hills, we do have some codes of our own for our area. And I would just hope that being, putting it back like it was originally to lots, that they will be certain that we have exactly like our codes for us originally. That just because, I'm not sure about your acres here as far as the detail of it, just personally only reading what you have on here. I just wanted to be sure that they understood that we do have our own codes. We are part of Castle Hills, and we do have a homeowners association, and that they would, you know, honor these things. But I'd like to go on record to let the council know that we are tickled to death to have our subdivision starting to close up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jaffet. We have Wesley West.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Wesley West. I live at eleven Shady Cove. Sure. My neighborhood is known as the West Oaks of Castle Hills. It was originally planned to be a twenty-six lot subdivision. We're currently at twenty-five lots. I've lived next door to the lot that Mr. Connell wants to return to its original plating, that being two separate lots. The previous owner had the two lots replatted into a current single lot, which reduced our total lot count from twenty-six to twenty-five, with a lot in question being approximately twice the size of any other lot in our subdivision. This lot is the only undeveloped land in West Oaks of Castle Hills. I'm in favor of returning the lot to its originally planned two lots. This would allow Castle Hills, or West Oaks of Castle Hills to be totally completed as originally planned with the addition of two new homes. The uniformity of the other home spacing could be continuing. The city's total property valuation would increase. I think approving Mr. Connell's request would be a positive thing for West Oaks of Castle Hills as well for the City of Castle Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Do we have anybody else? Okay, it is six fifty-five. We're going to close the public hearing and move on to item number three. A discussion and possible action on a replat application of John Connell for a replat establishing private lots. The proposed replat will create two lots from a tract of land, which is point three four seven acres, located in the West Oaks of Castle Hills, Unit Two, Planned Unit Development, formerly being all of Lot forty-three, Block ten, County Block five seventy-seven eight A, zero five seven seven A, West Oaks of Castle Hill subdivision, Planned Unit Development, recorded in volume ninety-five ninety-five, page forty-nine of the deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas. Said tract being divided into two residential lots, Lot forty-four, Block ten, point one seven five acres, and forty-five, Block ten, point one seven two acres, County Block five seven seven eight B, West Oaks of Castle Hills subdivision, Planned Unit Development. Mr. Isra?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval of the replat application of John Connell as you've just, our, the second.
Thank you so much. We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Winger?
Yes, I would like to know because it's not clear here. Are we talking about like five and seven of West Oaks? Is that the addresses that we're talking about?
It's nine Shady Cove, I believe. Correct?
I'm sorry, what?
It's in the, your binder, Ms. Winger. It's nine Shady Cove. The next page?
Nine Shady Cove?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it's Shady Cove. I thought it was West Oaks. Okay, so what are the sizes of the current lots in the West Oaks subdivision?
Mr. Connell, do you have that?
The current lot is point three four of an acre.
I'm sorry?
The current lot is one lot, is point three four of an acre.
Yes, I see that, but, but the, I'm not talking about your current lot. I'm talking, because I'm trying to address the concern that Mrs. Jaffet raised. The other, the other lots that are within the subdivision, what are the sizes of those lots?
Well, basically, they're half, half that size, and they're about forty-
I'm sorry, they're what?
They're about half the, they're about one, point one two of an acre.
Okay, and so-
They're garden home lots.
So, because what I understood Mr. West was saying, so therefore, what you're talking about doing is basically continuing the size of the other lots in the subdivision? Not making it smaller?
No, ma'am. I'm returning it back to the original two lots it was when it was first developed.
Okay, and do you know why they were replatted into one lot, or?
Mr. and Mrs. Wolf bought the two lots back in oh-eight and had it replatted to one lot, so they wanted to build one larger home. And after about eight or nine years, they decided not to.
Okay.
And then that's when it was available for me to purchase the lot from them. And my intention was to return it back to the original two lots as it was stated in the first development and then proceed from there.
And, and so as far as, as you know, there hasn't been a vote of the homeowners association to oppose it?
No, I do have approval from the HOA to replat back to two lots, and I have that back in December of last year.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sanderson. Yes, sir.
Yep, I, question for you, sir. So this basically would restore what is currently, I guess, inconsistent with the current neighborhood character back to the original neighborhood character. Would that be-
Yes, sir.
That be a summary of what you're trying to do at this point?
Exactly.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, if there's no further discussions, we'll call for the vote. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Okay, we're going to proceed to item number four, public hearing on a replat application of David Lewis for a replat establishing Lewis Subdivision Two. The proposed replat will create four lots from a tract of land, which is two point six nine three acres, and located in Lot Two, Block five- acres, and located in Lot Two, Block Five, County Block Five-seventy-seven-eight of Lewis subdivision, recorded in Volume Ninety-seven-fourteen, Page One-twenty of the deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas, and the part of Lot Six, arbitrary six-F, Block Five, County Block Five-seventy-seven-eight, land recorded in Volume One-One-Five-One-Four, Page One-Five-Two-Nine of the official public records of Bear County, Texas, establishing lots A, B, C, D, Block Five, and County Block Five-seventy-seven-eight, in the city of Castle Hills, Texas, Bear County, Texas. It is seven o'clock, and we're going to open the public hearing. Mr. Lewis, would you like to make some comments before?
Yeah, I need to put this, I have a presentation for you, so I use yours?
Yeah, it might be better if we just do the public hearing right now, Mr. Lewis, and then you can do the presentation for the next one. Okay, so item number four, we have Richard Opiella.
Hello, my name is Richard Opiella. My wife and I live at Two-zero-six Hibiscus Lane. I am here today to speak out against the proposal that is before you. David Lewis was allowed to subdivide his original lot one time already. I was aware of his first plan to sell his front yard and build a house, and while I was a bit concerned, I never spoke out, mainly because I was being a good neighbor. When the project was done, what we ended up with is what I consider a giant garden home. It is a hugely oversized house, and what now seems like an overly small lot that is inappropriate for the neighborhood. When over ten years ago, my wife and I purchased one of the smallest lots on Hibiscus Lane to build our house, my biggest concern was that we would build a house that did not conform with the neighborhood. When we went before the board to get our building plans approved, our stated goals were not to, or to cut down no oak trees, and if the possibility arose to purchase more land, more surrounding land to better fit in with the neighborhood. We were successful at both. We cut down no oak trees in while building our home, and by purchasing two or more of the smallest lots on Hibiscus Lane, we invested, and were able to recombine ownership and now have a more appropriate sized lot for the neighborhood. With this proposal, the exact opposite would be happening. To my knowledge, no building plans have been submitted to the city, so we have no idea how many trees could be cut down, and also with the possibility of more homes on small lots being built, there would definitely be growing problems with drainage and runoff. My driveway in particular is a former creek, and at the bottom of two hills. I knew there was flooding issues when we built our house, so we made sure to build high enough to be out of any known flood plain, but also in areas known by my neighbors to have flooded in the past. If this proposal passes, I am concerned that this care taken before we built will no longer matter. I've already noticed with just this one new house, there's a diversion of natural runoff flow, and combined with the additional impervious cover, it has created more flooding in my driveway, even after a moderate rain. Another concern it might is the impact from additional septic discharge. Being in such a secluded area, all homes on Hibiscus Lane require septic tanks for sewage. Septic tanks are not overseen by our local officials, but instead are approved and maintained, but are monitored by Bear County. This means a lack of oversight for maintenance contracts required to keep the systems working properly, and also with large homes on small lots, the potential for systems to be undersized and inadequate. The size of the county required septic system is based on the number of bedrooms, not bathrooms, and that's important, because that does lead to the possibility when getting septic approval, rooms that could be used as bedrooms might be labeled differently on building plans. Undersized or improperly maintained systems can lead to foul unsanitary discharge from the aerobic systems. And again, we were at the bottom of the hill, and my dad was a plumber, so he taught me at a very young age what rolls downhill. Finally, I just want to be clear, I'm not a complainer, I've never spoke to city council before, anyone who knows me here in Castle Hills knows that I'm someone that gets along with everybody, treats everyone with respect. I don't want to create problems for my neighbors, and most importantly, I'm not against development, but instead, I am for the proper development of each unique area of our city. I believe this proposal would set a terrible precedent that anywhere in the area, someone could buy lots, subdivide without restriction, and build whatever they want, regardless of impact to neighbors or community. I do not believe that is proper for this, or any other area of Castle Hills, and for this reason, I respectfully ask you to not approve this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Kevin Knippa. Yes, sir, thank you.
I'll wait till y'all have them, please. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. And if you have any papers left over, you can give them back to me, ma'am. Does anyone else would like to have a copy? Huh?
There's some people in the audience, Mr. Knippa.
Would you like one? Okay. All right, thank you all, my name is Mr. Kevin Knippa, and thank you for your time. I'm against this proposal, because my wife and I both have issues. Now, I have nothing against David Lewis, him and his family and my family have been together for years, so this is just on the aspects of what I think should not be done from the past. And now, David Lewis, when he divided the property at two-twelve Hibiscus, required to put a driveway separately, if emergency vehicles like were at my house at two-twelve Hibiscus, they wouldn't service two-twelve Hibiscus as additional driveway. So I was told, once he divided that property, the two-twelve, and it's two-twelve-A now, he was supposed to put in a separate driveway just in case, because we have an alleyway called Fulton Avenue. It's a state road belonging to the state of Texas, that Castle Hills is not maintained. It's pretty my property and his property, it's towards my property, the Lewis's, me, the Knippa, and Mr. Richard over there, and other people, a man called Fairchild, and it was put in there a long time ago. So it's, it's a driveway, and we all use it. The trouble is, once you divided that property, then the property behind it needs a driveway, because again, if there's a fire at my house, or emergency at my house, you can't get up to his driveway for his emergency. Against, I'm against dividing into four lots, changing the appearance of the property, which is not constant with the neighborhood. Numerous complaints, I have complained many times to dispatch and police over building practices, total disregard for neighbors, where a lot of the people that work there, blocking driveways during street construction. I have another complaint, there was dirt piled up at One-O-five Hibiscus, and a roll of carpeting or something left on the road, too, from bad construction practices. Construction dumpster was blocking the street all the time, and I kept complaining all the time, and it kept inconvenience to me and my wife, driving in and out. Contractors blocking driveway of personal vehicles and equipment, workers were confront, confrontational with me when asked to move, and threatened me many times, and I called the police on them. Blocking the postman from delivering mail, there are vehicles there working on the house at two-twelve, were blocking, and the mailman didn't deliver mail a few times. Nails and screws were left from the construction at two-twelve-A, on the alleyway that I use called Fulton, which is the street that I'm talking about, during the construction of two-twelve-A, when he divided it up from two-twelve, and it had three tires destroyed, cost three hundred dollars plus to get them repaired. Erosion control is required by market review board, caused eight to ten inches of topsoil in my driveway, making it difficult to leave the house during rainstorms. Odors coming from the porta potty were horrible at times, it was not maintained. The backyard septic system sprayed my driveway many times, and sprayed my wife's, when we came out with her car. The area we're talking about is designated as a single-family dwellings, and I think it should stay that way. You've already got one house there at the, at the two-fourteen Hibiscus, and then one house left over where he resides right now, so I think it ought to stay that way. There's more traffic in the road by doing this, if you put four houses in, you're going to have more cars on a road that's not maintained. The last time Hibiscus was ever maintained the proper way was back nineteen sixty-nine during the moon landing, and I should know, I was there as a kid on a bicycle watching them doing construction. And if you put more houses in there, divide it into four lots, with four houses, you're cutting down more trees. There's no way to build four houses without knocking down more trees, and many of the trees are heritage trees, very big, irreplaceable. And we have less impervious cover during flooding, which will lead to more water going out. The water will go into my property and go into other properties around there, and the water will eventually go down to the creek bed and go down on, behind Fox Hall, and can cause more flooding back there. And it evaluates the adjoining properties with the density, putting more houses back there. So I am against doing this. There's two lots there, put two houses there, but not divide it, because it sets a precedent. Once you divide those up, then someone can come along later, and I have about an acre and a half right there, maybe I can divide mine up, someone, neighborhood. It does, that area is not designed for this, that area is designed as single-unit family residence, and it should be kept that way. And if you've ever gone over there, drive the neighborhood, it's designed to be wilderness, wild, nice, big lush yards. We do not need this put in, and I'm concerned about emergency services, when they do put the four houses in, you have to drive down Hibiscus. It's not accessible very well, the road's going to be torn up, and who's going to repair the road? So I'm saying right now, I'm asking very nicely, please vote down this proposal, and keep the neighborhood the way it is, nice, quiet, and good for everybody, and it will make property values much stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Sean Baker.
My name is Sean Baker, I live at Three-O-four Fox Hall Lane. My wife and I have lived there for two, three years now. Our property has a long edge that fronts Hibiscus. I was raised in that house, and now I'm raising my two sons there. Growing up there, having the country setting, was a fantastic place for my brother and I to grow up. I loved it, my brother loved it, and now my two sons have fallen in love with it. The development that's proposed by the replat does not fit the setting that my brother and I, and that my sons would like to grow up in, so I'm opposed to the replat. I was general manager for the development of One-O-One Hibiscus, at the opposite end of where this replat is. We purchased that four-point-eight acre property to control its development, to be more consistent with the neighborhood. Now, as a refresher, developer wanted to put in a PUD on that four-point-eight acre property, they wanted to put sixteen houses there, and city council voted that down, under strong opposition from many of the residents in that area, and the primary reasons were that it did not fit the master plan, it did not fit the character of the neighborhood, and it would have substantially increased water runoff to the neighbors. The development for the replat here, the precedent was set with One-O-One Hibiscus. Exactly the same problems that would have occurred with One-O-One Hibiscus are the same that will occur with this replat. Now, I worked with David Lewis on the development of One-O-One Hibiscus. He assisted with the process in dealing with SAWs, CPS, and civil engineering firms. He is well aware of the master plan, and what the neighborhood is like. David proposed dividing One-O-One Hibiscus into more properties for the sake of revenue, and my family and I refused. We wanted to be consistent with the neighborhood. Now, I'm asking you to follow the precedent that was set with the development of One-O-One Hibiscus, oppose the replat, protect the neighbors and the neighborhood as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Ms. Sean Timlin.
Sean Timlin, Four Hundred, Fox Hall. I just want to talk a little bit about the character of the neighborhood. In the last agenda item, we talked about returning the West Oaks, I think it's called, to its, to its character, making the lots very small. Well, I am against this, because I'd like to be able to keep these lots large. In the master plan, it talked about keeping the area west of west to an acre, or as close to that as possible. In fact, the majority of the houses on Hibiscus are closer to an acre, in fact, seventy-four percent of them are closer to an acre, and I'd just like to see them stay, large lots. So I'm against this proposal, this replat.
Thank you, Ms. Timlin. Mr. Quentin Baker.
Good evening, counsel, Quentin Baker, Two-thirteen Hibiscus. I'm here to speak in opposition to the replat that is proposed. Neighbors have already gotten up and described the impact on the character of the neighborhood and the environment we have. I concur strongly, and I won't repeat that argument here, may go on to new points. Our property at Two-thirteen Hibiscus adjoins the north edge of the proposed replat, so we share one edge with Two-fourteen Hibiscus. Two-fourteen Hibiscus is at the top of the hill. Most of Two-fourteen Hibiscus downslopes to our property at Two-thirteen. The impact is that we will get the runoff from that property, okay? Part of the runoff also goes to the south onto Hibiscus, and that runoff will go to Richard's property. Right behind Richard's property is the runoff that goes through a drainage eechment, that goes all the way from Castle Hills First Baptist, West Castle Lane, Winston, Hibiscus, and Fox Hall. So we will be adding to the drain off load that always goes down that drainage area, and causes Richard and other neighbors' problems, okay? So we do have a runoff issue here. We personally will be the recipients of runoff, and so I have to demand that you protect us and avoid that runoff, okay? With regard to the runoff, David claims that he can put in a water harvesting system that will take away the first two inches of a rainfall, that's misleading. That system takes roof runoff and puts it into underground tankage. That's fine, as long as the tank has space. If it's repeated rains, or if the user, excuse me, the owner doesn't drain the tank down, why, it's useless, and then the water simply runs off. That system does nothing for impervious cover like driveways, sidewalks, and patios. The flag lot that's going to be on our side is going to have a long driveway, and by city code, impervious cover, and we will be the recipients of that runoff, okay? So please be very careful, that water harvesting system will not do what it's claimed. There will be runoff, okay? Sean just mentioned the master plan, so I want to point your attention to our city's master plan. The area we're in is called Zone One in the master plan, all right? And language in the master plan clearly says, this area is unique because of, quote, "oversized lots of one acre or more," unquote. So it's recognized in our master plan that we have a unique area. On page thirty-nine of the master plan, in the conclusions and recommendations concerning Zone One, it says, quote, "It is strongly recommended that replating of multi-acre lots be restricted in lot size to no less than one acre," unquote. That's in our master plan, and the phrase "strongly recommended" is the language in the master plan, okay? Two other points in the master plan that come to light here. It talks about water conservation on page sixty-one, protection of open spaces and natural drainage ways are means of protecting water supply and recharge, and it also addresses drainage, and brings up the issue of adverse impact of urbanization on increased surface runoff. So all of this is in our master plan. I ask you to adhere to our master plan, all right? Let's talk about lot size for a moment, we've already heard from neighbors about the character of the property. If you take all of the properties that front Hibiscus Lane, go to the tax, Bear County Tax Appraisal Property Search site, and get the lot sizes, the average is two acres. That's all lots that front Hibiscus. That includes two Fox Hall lots, that my sons and another that have side property lots. That's the average. On the two-hundred Hibiscus side, the average is three acres, okay? The roughly six-tenth acre lots that are proposed in this replat are a fifth of the average size of the lots in our street, completely contrary to the large lot size for which were known, and clearly contrary to the master plan, which says not less than one acre, all right? So with those points in mind, plus what you heard from our neighbors, I ask you to please oppose this replat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Next, we have Brother William Dooling.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counsel, Brother William Dooling, Two-zero-one Gladiolo Lane. And I signed up for both four and five, because I didn't know when the actual presentation would be, I think I would have more cogent remarks after seeing the presentation, but I did also want to say that I think what's been said here, and I concur with all of it, I don't live there, but I treasure that area, because it is so unique, that it really needs to be preserved, and we had this fight once before with One-O-One Hibiscus. And it just seems to me, any thinking person would have known about that, or been interested in that, and seen what all that discussion was about. And those were, the Bakers were able to do that in one, one acre sites, and reduced it from fifteen to five, so, you know, it's just, it's a huge difference, and if you drive by there now, they're large enough lots, very expensive homes, and tax base and all of that. So I, you know, I just think, I don't know... So I, you know, I just think, I don't know if it's really precedent, but I think it's instructive that that's the way to handle going forward because there are many of these large tracks. And over time, possibly, more will come up for development. But I think you have to hold fast to that one acre determination. It's probably not law, and it's not, you know, anything else. In fact, I don't even know where this master plan is. People say it's defunct, and, you know, I don't know. But I think it's instructive that one acre is absolute minimum for the Fox Hall Hibiscus area. And I truly wish you would hold on to that. Because we have these unique areas. I live on the south side, and it's different. Lots are smaller, but homes are smaller. And so that's why you have these areas. You don't have estate-sized lots for 2,000 square foot homes. I mean, it's just kind of silly. So in terms of keeping, I don't know what he's planning on building, and so I don't know how that would all work out. But I do know, from having visited Mr. Lewis's parents in the past, the whole ingress and egress is dicey at best. And that supposed street and the alley and just all of that. The whole thing is just too tight for that type of, a total of five homes, in my opinion. And I'm opposed to it, and I would hope that you would follow the wisdom of previous councils in maintaining the one acre. Thank you.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Next, we have Mr. George Booth.
Hi, I'm George Booth, 124 Dogwood Lane. Been resident 60 years, and I've seen a lot of changes in Castle Hills in my lifetime. I once rode my tricycle on Lakhel Selma, if you can believe that. Anyway, I'm on Hibiscus and Fox Hall in that area quite a bit because I have a number of friends over there. And I've attended most of the council board meetings, the board meetings, the commissions, committees. And I happened to be at an architectural review committee meeting one time, and Mr. Lewis was speaking, and they were discussing about his house and the requirements. And so they talked about the erosion control, and he promised that he would do it. And of course, that didn't happen. Unfortunately, the board forgot to mention it in their motion, so he wasn't obligated. And it's something that I see reoccur often, even with the city council, as well as the boards, that oftentimes they agree to things that they want done, but then they fail to put it in their motion. So I encourage you to remind the boards and commissions and committees to be careful when they're making their motions, to include everything that was said so that the agreements are made and kept. As far as this subdivision or subdividing of the plat, I don't think you should even consider it because he hasn't finished what he agreed to on his property at 212A that he built for a client. He hasn't put in the driveway. It's a, the road that Mr. Knippus spoke of is really a dirt path. It's nothing more than an alleyway, and that serves Mr. Knippus's property because he's landlocked. Mr. Lewis uses it to go to his property. And if there was an emergency vehicle, I think as Mr. Knippus said, there's no way that they could have two incidents at the same time and expect both properties to be serviced. Also, Mr. Knippus said he has another property. Well, that's behind his other property that he's currently living in. And so once that is developed, then there's going to be another problem trying to service that as well. The other problems that I've seen with Mr. Lewis's construction, and I like Mr. Lewis, I've met him a few times, I don't know him very well, but he seemed like a nice man. And so this is really strictly a business issue. But there on Hibiscus at 105, I've called the dispatch a couple of times. Once, there was a pile of dirt that he had delivered. And no, he's not on the property all the time. I don't think he really gives it enough supervision. And so the contractors do kind of what they want to do. And that's a problem that happens with a lot of contractors. They're not always there, they have other projects going on. And I'm sure he's a busy man. But nevertheless, the dirt was in the street probably about four feet. And then another time, there was a roll of carpet or something was rolled up. It was probably 10, 12 feet long. It was perpendicular to the lot, and it too was sticking out in the road. Once again, I called dispatch, and the police came out. But unfortunately, nobody in charge was there to talk with, so they left. I don't know what happened to it. I didn't go back to buy to see. But, you know, I just wanted to let the city know these problems exist and that they shouldn't. And so I'm against this project of subdividing the four properties. The runoff, I'm sure, is a real problem, which we already have here in Castle Hills. And like, I believe several people have said, the density, you know, is going to change the complexion. Because what you're going to wind up doing is you're kind of setting a precedent for the area. And pretty soon, you're going to have people on Fox Hall with these much larger tracks, with acre or two acres. And they're going to say, gee, you know, they've been subdividing over there. Well, we can make a little extra money. We can put a little mini mansion in front of us, or beside us, or behind us, wherever it may be. And all of a sudden, now you have a lot more houses over there. Great for the city as far as our coffers, but it's not great for the neighborhood. And so I really think you'll be changing what I think is truly one of the prettiest areas in Castle Hills, and I think we should preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Okay, we're proceeding, closing out the public hearing. Is anybody else that'd like to speak? Mr. Paul?
Frank Paul, 112 Shalamar. Well, this is where council earns their pay. You have one responsibility, obviously, and that is, what does the law say? Where did we fail in the past? Did we do the laws right? And what do they have to provide for or against such a deal? The aforementioned master plan was 1997. And in 1997, it was never actually formally adopted because we went through this when we were dealing with the property that was mentioned on, with the 16 houses. The only thing we were able to do, the law said, we had to do what the law said. But we'd be able to determine that the drainage and other issues were not adequate to allow the property go in there. Same as basis. We were against the law when we fought against basis. We had no choice, though, because the state said you have to do X, Y, Z unless. Well, fortunately, we found unless. The point I'm getting at is, I agree, I don't think this thing fits in that neighborhood. But where we're lacking to stop those things is where is our updated master plan? It's supposed to have been updated. A master plan would dictate. And the master plan that was referred to, as they say, it's not official, did say that the lots on west of West Avenue are recommended to be a minimum of an acre. Now, since then, 2004, '05, the PUD's been put in there, that's west of West. Couple of other lots have been recently done in there, .88, .85, pretty close. But it wasn't official, it was just recommended. So y'all have a lot of thinking to do. I don't think, I don't live there, so I don't have a say-so as far as that. But Castle Hills is unique. Fox Hall is unique. They're different, no question about it. I keep saying I live in the cheap seats. I'm unique. Other people live in the estates. They're very fine, nice homes. So as council, you have to look at all the various properties and do the best you can within the limits of the law of what allows you to do. I will recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. If there's nobody else, we will close the public hearing at 7:28 and proceed to item number 5. Discussion and possible action on replat application of David Lewis for a replat establishing Lewis subdivision 2. The proposed replat will create four lots from a tract of land, which is 2.693 acres, and located in Lot 2, Block 5, County Block 5778 of Lewis subdivision, recorded in volume 9714, page 120 of the deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas, and Lot 6, arbitrary 6F, Block 5, County Block 5778, land recorded in volume 11514, page 1529 of the official public records of Bear County, Texas, establishing lots A, B, C, and D, Block 5, and County Block 5778 in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to move to reject the replat.
Okay, we have a motion?
I didn't hear, I did not hear the motion.
I move to reject the replat.
I'll go ahead and second that.
If I may, when we're placing any conditional approval or disapproval of a plat, we need to cite and specify the particular code or state law that the plat does not comply with. Plating is generally a ministerial function. You review that, the staff reviews the plat, determines if it complies with the code and its ordinances, and if it does not, we state why, citing to a specific section. The applicant will get an opportunity to address the particular basis of any disapproval or recommended modification. I think y'all may have been provided with an excerpt of an update on the change of law. I don't know if y'all have that or not, but I can certainly give that to you or read provisions of the local government code if necessary.
Ms. Winger and Mr. Sanderson, do you have the requested code?
I'm sorry?
Do you have the requested code?
I didn't hear you.
Do you have the code of ordinances that we need to provide by the state?
No, but I do know from talking to the Attorney General's office that until we have a new master plan, the old master plan and the recommendations hold.
Mr. Fletcher, does that suffice?
We're going to need to specify the basis of the denial, and again, cite to a particular code section, or state law, or city ordinance to substantiate that basis.
Do you need the actual number, or can she give you the general gist?
We need to be as specific as possible because the applicant needs to have notice of what the problem is so that they can try to address the problem. So we need to be as specific as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. Ms. Winger? Mr. Sanderson?
So I have a question. So for of the variety of different reasons that this could be rejected or accepted, then we have to be able to go ahead and, as non-lawyer members of city council, we need to be able to go ahead and cite legal specifications as to why we are rejecting and/or accepting this particular item here? Is that correct?
Yes. Generally, there is a discussion on drainage. Generally, you have an engineer looking at drainage. I cannot tell you, I'm not a drainage engineer, I'm an attorney, so you'll go to the experts and rely on them and their opinions on whether or not the plat conforms with our city code.
So if we were to vote against this, then we would have to go ahead and know in advance that we are going to vote against it so that way we would have the appropriate city code or state code available with us?
Part of the plating process is a review of the plat. And when you review it, you're determining whether or not it complies. So there should be a checkoff to determine whether or not it complies, as I understand it.
It seems to me that we would have to go ahead and delay any kind of decisions so that way that we would have to go and determine what the appropriate legal mechanism for rejection would be. Because certainly on the spot, I wouldn't be able to go ahead and scry these particular, these particular legal, you know, specifications here to be able to go and quote. I'm not, I would not be able to do that on the spot.
You can't delay because there's part of the statute that governs plating requires that it be processed in a timely fashion. Part of the processing determine, staff will determine whether or not the application is complete. The plat will then be reviewed, and then there will be comments made. As I understand it, the comments to this particular plat is that it conforms to the code.
Sounds like that there is, we can't really reject it based on, if we don't have a particular specification to be able to reject it with, we can't really reject it. Because, I mean, there's no way that I'd be able to go ahead and pull out any reason like that.
Well, the state law recently changed, and frankly, anytime you're going to reject it, there's generally going to be a reason. And it's going to be because the plat does not conform to the city's ordinance. So right now, if there's a motion to make a conditional approval or an outright disapproval, we have to specify the basis of that conditional approval or outright disapproval, citing to a code section.
Ms. Winger?
So you're mentioning engineering that reflects drainage. Why has the city not provided us with that information?
I believe item A is a letter from the city engineer.
I can't hear you.
Can you use a mic? In the attachment, it has a stormwater management plan that's been reviewed by, and it was reviewed by our city engineer that was submitted by the engineer's applicant. And this wouldn't have, we would not have received a final letter from LNV, our city engineer, if this didn't comply. That's in the back of the attachment here.
I'm sorry, so we don't have a final letter?
We do have a final letter. It's in the backup. It's in the agenda backup as a final plant, which is a letter from our city engineer, LNV, that says, "We've reviewed the final plat and stormwater management plan for the Lewis subdivision 2 and recommend the plat be approved." So essentially, an applicant like Mr. Lewis comes in and submits the plat application, and our engineers review and basically cross-check references to our subdivision ordinance, Chapter 212 Local Government Code, to make sure it's in compliance. Once that's done, they provide us the final plat letter, which is in the back of the agenda plan. Also, the applicant has to submit, in this case, a stormwater management plan, the tax certification, letters of certification from the utility providers, minimum onsite sewage facility requirements, approved SAWs, and copy of the final plat. That's all included in the backup of your agenda item there. One thing I wanted to mention, too, and Mr. Schnall's not here, but specifically in the Agenda Com under Issue, is the language pertaining to, due to the amendment change, as Mr. Fletcher mentioned, on September 1st, the new law, if a plat is either conditionally approved or disapproved, then the city council must provide the applicant with a written statement that clearly articulates the conditions for conditional improvement or the reason for disapproval. Each condition or reason for disapproval specified in the written statement must be directly related to the requirements under the local government code or the city subdivision ordinance and include a citation to the law that bases for the conditional approval. The local government code also states a condition or disapproval may not be arbitrary. And that's due to the House bill change of 3161 back on September 1st.
What about traffic and safety?
I'm sorry, Mr. Isbrand?
If I could ask a couple of questions, just to make sure I understand this. So, Mr. Rappley, has the applicant met with or complied with all the city codes in order for this to come before us?
Yes. If they hadn't, we wouldn't have received the final plat letter from LNV, our city engineer.
And so, Mr. Fletcher, to your description of what we may or may not approve, based on that, there is no justification under city code to deny it? Is that what you're saying?
At this time, there's no evidence of any justification.
And there's no evidence of any violation or any issue with state law that would provide us any evidence to deny it either?
That's correct, based on the review that's been provided to you all.
And this is a new state law that went into effect September of this past year? Is that my, correct?
That is correct. However, plating has always been a ministerial function, meaning if you meet the rules, you get approved. So I think the law has basically been codified to address some abuses throughout the state.
And that's the clarification, I guess, I'm asking for. So does the new state law then say, any differently than previous law was written, that if we don't take the action to approve or don't take action within a certain timeframe, it is automatically approved?
That is consistent with the historical law. There's generally been a 30-day time period. It's been tweaked a little bit in that if there is a provision, if you state a basis for disapproval or conditional approval, the applicant can come back and respond to that. That response from, then the council can reply or must reply within 15 days. So it gets a little tighter. And if you don't reply or make a determination to see if the issue has been addressed, it becomes automatically approved.
Okay. And then one last question, if I might. The local government code, according to the backup that we have, says that "condition of disapproval," and it's in quotes here, "may not be arbitrary." So is the interpretation there that the master plan is arbitrary as we would define it in this circumstance?
Well, the state law is not addressing the city's master plan. That's going to be a case, whether or not a decision or recommendation is arbitrary will be a case-by-case analysis.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. May?
I have a follow-up. So I just need some direction here because I can make arguments on each. I have a follow-up. So I just need some direction here because I can make arguments on either side at this point, but we haven't heard from Mr. Lewis. So wouldn't it be appropriate to hear from him today, answer questions? And then if necessary, uh, pass this to the next voting session?
So it would be appropriate to listen to the applicant. Uh, my comments were to address a motion that was being made to make sure that the motion was in conformity with the state law. Passing on this may not be in compliance with the state law because the governing body only has thirty days to approve or disapprove or conditionally approve a plat.
In this case, as indicated in the agenda comm, that, that the date the final plat was filed with the city, uh, was on March fifth, two thousand twenty. So.
Ms. Winger?
So I noticed that the letter from the city engineer is somebody named Joe Arteritano. I don't even know who that is. I don't know when he became the city engineer. Never heard of him before.
Mr. Rappley?
Uh, Mr. Arteritano is, um, I think he's not, he's not here. We have someone else from L and V here, um, Abe Salinas. But, uh, Mr. Arrentano reviews all of our plats.
Yeah, I just wanna know about when, when this firm became the city engineer because we've been using two firms. I've never heard of this firm before.
Well, the city has four on-demand engineers. And, um, I understand about two months before I came on board as city manager, the city council accepted those four, um, engineers, which I believe, uh, L and V, R P S, M and S, and I believe C and C. So mainly L and V is used, um, for our plat and plan review, um, in our permit office.
And Mr. Rappley, just to clarify, L and V is the one that performed the quality assurance and quality control on Antler?
Yes, they also did that, but they primarily have consistently done our plat and plans review for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Isbrand?
If I could ask one more question. Mr. Rappley, you said these documents were filed on March fifth. So we would have till April fifth to take action or it would automatically be approved? Is that correct?
Yes, according to, uh, state law here, that the, uh, approved with conditions or disapproved the plan or plat within thirty days after the date the plan or plat is approved or submitted with conditions is approved by the governing body unless it is approved with conditions or disapproved within that period.
So if we were-
Basically, the talk, the clock is ticking on the thirty days.
Right, so if we were to take no action tonight or no action until the next regular meeting, which would be past the fifth, then this has automatically been accepted, if you will. And Mr. Fletcher, what you're telling us is the only option that we have is to accept it because we don't have the, um, discrepancy with city code or state law that would preclude us from approving it.
I, I'm not aware of one. If there is one, you can disapprove it. Uh, there's a process for that disapproval to, or conditional approval to be rectified.
What, what prevents anybody from replating just lots in general, as long as they keep within some legal framework here? Could they subd- subdivided into some arbitrary small or large size? And how, how, how would you be able to go ahead and do any proper research or manage that? I mean, if we have, you know, no time to be able to go and, and we've got thirty days. I mean, that's how often, that's how often we meet. We meet once every thirty days or thereabouts. So that, this, this doesn't seem particularly a reasonable approach to go ahead and manage these kind of problems here. I, I'm, I'm having a tough time wrapping my head around this. So you might try, try describing to me why, how, why, what, where. I mean, this is, this seems rather peculiar.
Uh, I'm not the author of the state law. Uh, that's the law that's, that we have. And again, historically, you've had thirty days to review a plat. And if you didn't approve it, uh, generally, it's gonna be deemed approved. Part of the rationale, I think, of the new law is because there's been abuses across the state. Uh, in addition, as I mentioned before, this is a ministerial process. The code describes what a plat needs. An engineer provides that document to another engineer who reviews it. And it either, and they go down the different provisions of chapter forty and they check the boxes. And if they meet all the requirements, it should be approved. If they don't, then there is an issue and that needs to be addressed.
Mr. Gregory?
I have an additional question. But, okay, so, um, now I just forgot my original question here. Uh, but, um, so, uh, let me go, let me defer to the other person here and rethink my question. I, I apologize.
Mr. Gregory?
To start with, I'd like a copy of the state law. Now, I've, I've been around these things for a long time. The first time I ever saw where a neighborhood almost was destroyed was many years in, in Alma Heights, when the old TMI school was sold. And the diocese of West Texas, in its great brilliance, decided they were gonna put two sixteen-story towers where the old TMI school went. And my father and Mr. Theo Weiss, who's another lawyer, successfully fought it as it would be destruction, basically a destruction of the neighborhood as it exists. I cannot believe that a state law is basically saying that any neighborhood that has any land audit can theoretically destroy the existing neighborhood by putting as much or whatever they want to on there as long as the existing codes for whatever small piece of property or law or large building is being put on that property. Everybody on Fox Hall then is in danger of having a multi-story hotel some, somehow wandering on in as they had in River Oaks about thirty years ago. All of a sudden, smack dab in the middle of the residential area, is a twenty or thirty-story ho- uh, residential living space. If we are going down the road to destroy what is a gem of the city and basically say there is basically no zoning in particular that can stop anything like this, then I wanna see if that law is meant to do that. I can't imagine that. If the particulars of how something is built and whether, of course, CPS, I can never imagine CPS not approving something. See, or Time Warner Cable, yeah. But the concept of the destruction of a neighborhood, as long as you can put in a sewer pipe or a septic tank or the correct electricity, I cannot believe that's what the law is meant to say. That's why I want a copy of the law. And I'd also like a minute, the minutes of the session in which people discussed the law. I wanna know the original intent of the law as they passed it. I, I don't think the intent was meant to take basically zoning out of residential cities. Houston doesn't have any zoning, so it doesn't make any difference.
Right.
But we do, and we're not brilliant in as much as we catch every little jot and twiddle. But I cannot imagine, and, but I wanna see the law and I wanna see the minutes that show what the original intent of the law is supposed to be.
Uh, Mr. Rappley provided you with, um, my copy of the provisions of the state law. It has my little underlining on it. You can ignore that and, and read it entirely yourself. We can certainly provide you with the legislative history, to the extent there was even much of a discussion, uh, in a public hearing on the matter. Uh, we can, we can provide that. Uh, I would just say that we're not talking about zoning in this instance. So the height of the building is not necessarily an issue. We're just talking about dividing the land into smaller parcels. And that's gonna be controlled by your subdivision ordinance. So that's the primary focus. And if there is a provision in the state law or the plating ordinance that they're not complying with, we don't have to approve it. We just need to tell them. And then they'll have an opportunity to address it. The way those law has evolved basically is providing the applicant an opportunity to take several bites of the apple to get their property subdivided. Once they're given due notice of what the problem is, they can respond. And then you all will have to reconsider the matter to determine whether or not they've complied with, with the city code or the state law.
Mr. Fletcher?
Well, I noticed in what you were talking about, you were saying that the state law was passed September first. At this time-
Effective September first.
Suggested that perhaps something's in the mix to change things that may not be correct. I don't know whether it is. I don't know whether it isn't. But the, 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 I, I wanna see the original intent because what you're basically doing is ruining the potential of every single neighborhood in this city.
Or any city.
As long as you put in through every, whatever code specificities of electricity and, and water and sewage, you can just go and raise all sorts of havoc. You don't have to have something ten stories tall. You can go through Fox Hall and obliterate it. You can put, you can put in thirty, forty, fifty townhomes in some of those places over there and you can say there's no way to stop it.
Mr. Fletcher, it, my question is if we were to pass an ordinance, we could specifically cite the ordinance in theory? As far as subdivision?
If, if you were to, are you asking if, can you revise your plat subdivision?
Mister Lewis is vested, but hypothetically speaking, to Mister Gregory's point, the mechanism to stop that would be to pass a subdivision ordinance?
Correct. If you want more requirements, let's just say you want additional requirements in the, in the plating, in the division of land, you can amend the subdivision ordinance.
So there is a mechanism. It's just not in effect in the city of Castle Hills at this time?
Right, and the state law is not saying you can't do it. It's simply saying if you deny the plat, you need to state the, the specific reason why. Or if you put on a conditional approval, you need to state the specific basis for that and you can't be arbitrary.
Does the state law prohibit a city government from coming in before the thirty day period and have a new agenda code which specifies size of lot concurrent to the neighborhood or something, or some such matters like that, if there is an existing question of whether to implement something?
I, I think that's illegal because Mister Lewis is vested.
It, it, let's just say it is a legal issue that I think may be appropriately addressed, um, in private and after we review the, the matter a little further.
All right.
Uh, Mr. and, Mistress Anderson?
So what I see here in this number five here in the sheet, a pair that was just handed to me, disapprove with, disapprove with explanation. There's nothing here that says disapprove with citation. It says disapprove with explanation. So I think we can disapprove with explanation in that, in that it does not comport with the, the local traditions of, of, of that particular neighborhood. I mean, that the makeup of that neighborhood there.
I, I think what you may be looking at is a summary, um, article that was provided. If you could hold it up, I might be able to clarify. Yeah, so that's a summary article.
Explanation. It does not say citation. So I, I'd like to go ahead and, and perhaps redo this and let's go ahead and redo it with, with an explanation, which I, if that's what it's asking for, then let's do it then.
Again, that's a summary. The, I can read the provision of the state law. It's two twelve point zero zero nine one. Municipal full authority or governing body that conditionally approves or disapproves a plan or plat under this subchapter shall provide the applicant a written statement of the conditions for the conditional approval or reasons for disapproval that clearly, yeah, excuse me, clearly articulate each specific condition for the conditional approval or reasons for disapproval. Goes on, so part B, each condition or reason specified in the written statement must, A, be directly related to the requirements under this subchapter, plating. B, include, this is what you're looking for, a citation to the law including a statute or municipal ordinance that is the basis for the conditional approval or disapproval, if applicable. And two, may not be arbitrary. So that's why I started the process and interrupted and say, if we're going to make the motion, we need to be specific because the applicant is entitled to notice of why his plat is not subject to approval.
This is kinda bizarre because this requires kind of aforementioned, you know, a, a, kind of an understanding that you're going to reject it to begin with and then already have a, a, a plan as to why it was rejected and the specifications within law as to why it was rejected. That's seems kind of, kind of a bizarre thing to, to put on a city council that unless we're all, you know, as far as I know, it's, it's not a state requirement that we all are lawyers and be versed in depth in this kind of, uh, legal understanding here. I mean, that's, that's kind of, uh, that's, that's kind of bizarre. I mean, it's just, it seems like that I could also come up with a, I guess, a, a peculiar rule that someone would have to understand, I don't know, the intricacies of my software engineering world right here in order to go ahead and, you know, pass a law or whatever. This seems, you know, odd.
Ms. Winger?
Um, based on what Mr. Fletcher just said, I'd like to request that we go into executive session to discuss this further with him.
Mr. Fletcher? Good with that?
Sure, that's fine. If you, it's gonna be five five one point oh seven one under the government code.
Mayor, before you go into executive session, it, do you wanna hear from, um, Mr. Salinas, our, our engineer from L and V who can speak to possibly how a citation may be, um, a- addressed from a technical aspect or the master plan question?
If council's amenable to that, I think that's a great idea. Council, uh, we hear from our, our city engineer?
Well, I'd like to go into executive session, but I'm only one person, so it's up to the council.
We'll take a quick vote to hear from our city engineer. All in favor? He's sitting right in front of you, Mr. Gregory.
Yes, Mr. Arrentano, as I mentioned, is not here. Um, and Mr. Salinas works with him and is here to speak on his behalf in regards to his plat.
Mr. Salinas?
Would you also li- uh, hear from the applicant's engineer?
Sure.
Good evening. Uh, my name is A V Salinas and I'm here to represent L and V and as the city engineer for Castle Hills. Um, pursuant to the ordinance adopted by the city of Castle Hills, as outlined in chapter forty subdivision and chapter fifty zoning, we reviewed the proposed plat and found that the application was in compliance with the zoning and subdivision requirements as outlined by the city. And as such, we recommended approval. Now, in the discussions about what is, what conforms with the character of the neighborhood-
I'm sorry, I don't know why the city engineer is recommending anything. You're, you're not supposed to be recommending. You're simply supposed to be giving us your opinion on the drainage.
This is an, isn't this an engineering, uh, this is an engineering discretion as opposed to a, a, you know-
Part of, if I may, part of the subdivision ordinance requires a letter from an engineer and-
I understand that, but that doesn't, that's not a recommendation.
Ms. Winger, can, can Mr. Fletcher, uh, explain, please? Mr. Fletcher, please proceed.
And I was just going to the specific site unless you have it handy. Uh, but part of the final plat approval requires a letter accepting the plat by the city engineer. So that's why there's an engineering view.
I'm sorry, Mr. Salinas, please proceed.
Okay. From chapter forty of the subdivision requirements, there is a portion of the write-up that says the city engineer's responsibilities to review the plat application and recommend an approval, which would just mean that we are recommending that that it's ready, uh, for you all's final, uh, concurrence. Now, with respect to the conversations about the character of the neighborhood and the master plan, when we review the document, the process basically involves us looking at the zoning map and the zoning requirements as outlined in the code. And that's what we follow. And this area is zoned as a single-family residential type A, which allows for the lots to be subdivided to a minimum of fourteen thousand square feet. If it's the city's desire to not allow this type of development, then my recommendation would be for you all to reevaluate your comprehensive plan, the vision of the city, and then adopt amendments to your zoning map and code requirements to address this in the future. But as it stands now, this is the code that the city has and, and that's why we, um, have this position.
Council, do we have any questions for Mrs. Salinas? Mr. Gregory?
I have a question for our lawyers. All the zoning things that we have gone up to this time, from the basis school to the sixteen houses that were gonna be crammed into a small lot, to the little house that wanted to be put on a peninsula next to a drainage that we turned down, all that goes out the window because this law changes everything. So everything we've done in the past has been changed by this law because all those things that were cited in the past, especially drainage, I mean, especially basis, things that were cited in the past, especially drainage, I mean, especially basis, was it would destroy the neighborhood, and basis, there were further requirements of traffic control. Even more importantly, when we turned down, having somebody put a school smack dab in the residential neighborhood on Cremaria, wanted to turn an old garage into a school, which would have ruined the neighborhoods over there, all that goes out the window because of this new state law. The city doesn't have the flexibility to say what it did then. It can't say now and have an effect unless there's a specific ordinance that it can pass to reflect those concerns.
Mr. Gregory, I think you're talking about architectural review as opposed to the subdivision of a lot on the plat. They weren't subdividing the lot on Cremaria. The church wasn't trying to subdivide a lot with basis. Those are two separate, completely different issues. Mr. Fletcher, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I can't speak to every single example that you mentioned, but we're focusing on subdivision. So, in fact, if these are ARC issues, that's not relevant here. It's going to be whether or not the property can be subdivided.
I do want to go into...
Ms. Winger?
Executive session.
Okay. We're going to go into executive session, and we'll hear from Mr. Lewis and his engineer when we get back. The city council reserves a right to consider business out of the posted order and the right to adjourn to executive session to discuss items which are not listed in executive session, but which qualify to be discussed in closed session, as permitted by Texas Open Meetings Act, chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. It is 801, and we'll be stepping in...